We all please rise and enjoy the meeting. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This isn't working.
One's not turning on?
It's like a plug there. I can, we can share this one.
Okay.
Uh, if you please, uh.
Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
Vice Chair Poikert.
Present.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Present.
Commissioner S. Vander.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
All present, two vacancies.
Okay, do we have any, uh, items pressed to speak on anything, the not of the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, alright. What do we got on here then?
Moved approved amendments from July seventeenth nineteen twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, I want to pay any opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, no opposed, okay, thank you. Alright, let's go and begin, first item.
Good evening Chair Commissioners, um, this item is the continuance from the July seventeenth twenty twenty-four meeting, um, this was regarding the West Coast Boulevard and Locust Avenue Warehouse Project, and I've just got a brief presentation just to kinda update, um, you on the project, where things are now, and also kinda reminder of some of the features of the project. Um, so just on the first slide, just to kinda remind everybody, this is the project site, it's a twelve acres, land located southeast corner of Locust Avenue and West Coast Boulevard, uh, it's located in the Rialto Airport specific plan, and has a land use designation of planned industrial development. The applicant, as you may recall, is proposing to consolidate the parcels of land that make up the site into, uh, one eleven acre parcel, and then develop a two hundred twenty-five-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-five square foot industrial warehouse building on the site, as you see here. At the last meeting, the, uh, some of the questions asked were, had to do with adding additional glazing to the exterior of the building, um, then also questions about, uh, the installation of the traffic signal at, uh, Locust and Casa Grande, particularly the timing, uh, of that signal, and then also about the fair share contribution.
Yes.
That was presented at the last meeting as well. So I'll, I'll move on to that here too, just a reminder here also, the, this next slide's the landscape exhibit, um, just again showing the commission where the applicant would place the building, and then around the perimeter, and all the street frontages would have significant amounts of landscaping, greenery to help soften the development from the, uh, public right-of-way, and also existing residential uses to the north, east, and east of the site. Um, this next slide, this is the revised elevations, um, the applicant, uh, in response to the commission, uh, commission's request did add additional glazing on all four sides of the building, they also did darken the, uh, the colors of the popped out areas, the articulation, um, still kept them a gray, uh, color, uh, to, you know, have them subtle, given that they are, uh, adjacent to residential areas, but at least now they're a little more pronounced, so those are the changes that have been made since the last meeting. Um, the next slide here, this is just, I've updated their voluntary contributions page to reflect, uh, what was originally, uh, discussed at the last meeting, as well as new contributions, so the applicant will still, uh, repave the western half of Locust Avenue along their frontage, and construct the full width of West Coast Boulevard, um, and then relocate and replace any, in private property improvements that may be impacted by the construction of West Coast, those were all discussed at the prior July seventeenth meeting, since that meeting, the applicant has agreed to contribute, uh, two hundred forty-one thousand five hundred dollars towards the traffic signal identified for Locust Avenue and Casa Grande, um, and then additionally, they have signed a project labor agreement as well, uh, for this project. As far as the traffic signal timing, um, planning staff and engineering staff have looked at it, understand that it is a warranted signal, uh, it is, uh, expected that this signal would be installed by the city as a part of the Locust, uh, roadway improvement project that's ongoing right now, that that would happen by either the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-five, or the first quarter of twenty twenty-six, which would likely happen before construction of this project completes.
Okay.
Okay? And so with that, the staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolutions for you tonight approving the project, and if you have any additional questions, I'm here to answer those, the applicant's here too.
And then for me, you answered all my questions, it all sounds a lot better than it did last time, so we need to, um, do we have anyone who are requesting to speak on this side?
We do have speakers, we have three speakers.
Okay, we'll go and have the first speaker.
First speaker is Love Young.
Good evening everyone, my name is Love Young, and I'm a member of the local seven-eighty-three labor union in here in north of America, and, uh, I, I'm, I am in support of the, of this project here, it would, uh, help us, um, pay our bills and, you know, uh, you s- you know, do a good job for the city, and, and, uh, we are, we are appreciated if you will approve of this project, it would, uh, it would, it'd be, it'd be also good for the city, and, and for the men and women that work for, uh, for, for our union, it will really, uh, uh, help us out a lot, and we'll, and we will really appreciate it if you approve of this project, thank you.
Thank you, alright, next speaker please.
The next speaker is Clyde Curtis.
Uh, I believe you spoke last night too, didn't you?
Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you taking the opportunity to deal with a probably very routine matter for you, but it's not for me.
Yeah, no.
I've been waiting forty years for this improvement that I was promised, and, uh, as it stands right now, it's a haven for illegal activity, uh, street racing going up and down there.
Yeah, I know, square.
Yeah, I think other, yeah, I don't think this unknown to the rest of you, um, I think any improvement proposed would be a major step forward, and from what I can see of this one, I think it would be a, a net improvement to the entire community, so I can see no reason to, to vote against it, um, there's always gonna be inconveniences anytime there's change, and we know that, but I think they've done a pretty good job of mitigating those, and the other thing is, I think that the, the inconvenience is minor compared with the improvements that they would make, so again, I thank all of you for taking this into consideration, I know your time is important, and I respect that, thank you.
Thank you sir. Next, next speaker please.
The next speaker is Victoria Holman.
Hi.
How are you guys? Um, I just wanted to come, similar type of requests, I think they've met all of the, every, all of the concerns that we brought up last, uh, last month, um, I think the only thing that I was gonna pitch, and I don't know if it's, I'm not as close to the project as I am, I'm in the neighborhood, but just not like, close proximity, but maybe only a curb on the north side of West Coast, and then not a sidewalk, so you don't encroach on people's property that they own, um, and then the sidewalk on the south facing side, so that was the only thing that I was coming to say, so, I hope that helps.
Okay.
Okay, thanks guys.
Thank you.
We have one additional.
Okay.
I believe it's Jose Kizel, Kizala, sorry, sorry about that.
Then the applicant, if I can have an applicant come up after this too.
Jos, I'm so sorry.
Good evening Commissioners of the Board, my name is Joseph Casala, Union Representative of Local, Labor's Local Seven Eighty-three, I'm here in favor of the project, this project will allow local members who live in the area to work closer to the home, where they can be with their loved ones, but also this project will keep members' benefits in place, like healthcare, and a fully funded, um, pension plan, so let me give you a little example of, um, of myself, my father was a, my great-grandfather, and my father was a, a labor, they retired, they had, you know, the hours of working, they had healthcare, you know, fortunate to have healthcare, if it wasn't for my father to have insurance, like this project that he put hours in, I wouldn't be here, I was a verge of being a vegetable, or being dead on the table, so this project, luckily, we are fortunate enough that we have insurance, I'm alive, and, well, being, speaking in front of you guys, I shouldn't be, so I thank God for, for that, and I thank the, the union for, you know, keeping us working in projects like this to keep us have hours, so on behalf of the Labor International Union of North America, we are in favor of this project, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant, if I can have you come up?
Good evening Commissioners, uh, thank you for hearing us out, I think, uh, all of you heard me quite at length the last time, so I'll keep it short, but happy to answer any questions, I think Mr. Casey did a good job of presenting the updates, so I won't repeat that, uh, I think the project was fairly well received the last go-around, with the exception of, uh, uh, the various things that Mr. Casey discussed, uh, I think the community has well received our project, we've, uh, done a lot of community outreach as we detailed the last time, and.
Yeah.
And I think that our neighbors are very much in support of this project, and as long-term owners, uh, that's important to us, we wanna keep our neighbors, uh, informed, we, we wanna answer their questions, uh, we wanna meet with them, and, uh, working with laborers I think is important as well, so, uh, in, in any case, if you have any questions.
No, I just, I just wanted to thank you, um, for taking the time to, to look at it again, you know, my biggest concern was that traffic signal, uh, it's huge concern, but, um, the additional contribution, um, will help it go faster, and hopefully it sounds like it'll be done before the warehouse is even finished, and I gotta be honest, I think you're the first owner that's gonna maintain control and ownership of the warehouse that we've approved since I've been here, that I know, and so that shows a lot of value, uh, interests in, uh, maintaining the property and, and, and that sort of thing, so, I, I appreciate it.
Very good, well, thank you, thank you for your comments, and it's important to our family, uh, you know, we're gonna be here for the very long term, and we, we want, uh, these, all the properties we own in the city to look good, and, of course, including this one, it's important to us, important to our family.
Last time, excuse me, last time I, I had a, and I've had a complaint, not a complaint, but concern, about the pollution that comes from having a warehouse, and all the truck traffic and all of that.
Right.
And plus the, uh, the workers, uh, my, my concern is still about the pollution, I, I understand what the labor, uh, representatives are saying, it's, it's a job, and I don't know, the gentleman that spoke, uh, with the, the blue t-shirt, he said he had some kind of a, no, the other one, uh, yeah, uh, he had some kind of an issue, was that as related to the, uh, pollution? No, something? Okay, no problem, but I, I, but I am still concerned, are you, you're working with the, the new legislation that has just been passed, can you explain a little bit about that? Uh, was it twenty-three oh five?
That's correct, and I'm happy to talk about it, and, uh, an air quality specialist, and Ace might as well, so he can probably get in more detail if, if you wanna come here and maybe help me out, but, um, let me start with the summarized version, if you want more detail, Ace can, I'll turn this over to Ace, uh, so, uh, the Air Quality Management District, which manages the air quality in and around this area, and most of Southern California with the exception of San Diego, uh, has put, uh, quite a few programs in recent years to address air quality impacts, one of the many has been, uh, this indirect source rule, uh, and a program, this rule twenty-three oh five, where they are requiring warehouse, uh, property owners over a hu- uh, uh, over a hundred thousand feet to contribute a significant amount of money, this project's expected to contribute about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars per year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, towards air quality improvement, as all the ware, large warehouses in around Rialto and, and the LA Basin, uh, so a huge amount, number of air quality projects are being planned, are to be on their way, uh, you of course know that, uh, cars are expected, uh, fuel, the, uh, sale of, uh, of, of passenger car, uh, uh, engines are not gonna be allowed after twenty thirty-five, uh, by that point, the Air Quality District expects that roughly half the trucks on the roads will be, uh, EV as well, uh, and, uh, if you are watching the news, uh, the rail, uh, a couple of days ago, uh, were told that they needed to, uh, apply to administration air quality rules, and there's a whole series of additional rules, uh, advanced clean fleet, so the long and the short of it is, air quality is not perfect, I think we all know this, a lot of efforts have been expended in the last two, three years, more will come in, um, and while there's still room to grow, to, to do better, and we are all trying to do better, there's a lot being done, so, if you want more details on that, I think I can turn this over to Ace, and he can.
Yeah.
He can give you more data and.
That would help a little bit, and thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, uh, good evening, um, Ace Melissa with Kimley Horn, um, I conducted the, the air quality analysis for the project, um, and just to give a little bit of background, we, the air quality analysis that we prepared was specifically for the project, we analyzed the project in accordance with the air district's guidance, uh, and their recommendations, um, and the project itself would not be, uh, would not have significant air quality impacts, um, both on a regional level and on a local level, so we also, we looked at the local, localized potential impacts, and everything was less than significant, um, you know, and localized includes the immediate, uh, neighbors adjacent to the project, we also conducted a health risk assessment that looked at any health effects from the, um, from the project, and that was also less than significant, um, our, our analysis was conservative as it looks at the worst case, and it looks at the, uh, emissions that, uh, hap- would happen, would be projected to happen on the opening day, um, with full implementation of the project, but, you know, as was mentioned before, there's, uh, a lot of regulations that have, have been continuing to be implemented, um, that are continuing to be implemented, that, uh, will reduce emissions in the future, so, um, you know, what we've identified in our analysis, um, you know, is less than significant, and that will improve in the future with the, the current regulations that are in place, and, you know, there are more on the horizon as well, uh, that will also further reduce emissions, um, you know, and I just wanna give a little bit of background too, on the, I mean, there's been significant air quality regulations over the last twenty years that have occurred, uh, with the respect of reducing diesel-related emissions, um, and those have, uh, reduced regional emissions significantly, and we're only just starting to see the, the, the benefits of, or the improvement of those, uh, we have much fewer, um, you know, uh, days with where we're exceeding standards, and a lot of the standards are, were below the air quality, uh, standards as a region, so, um, there's been a lot of improvement in that regard, and this project will only benefit from the regulations that are already in place, clean air emissions, uh, I'm sorry, requirements for trucks, uh, will be further implemented and, and will improve emissions.
So it looks like we're heading into a, uh, EV type of, uh, industry, uh, where it's supported by, um, electric vehicles, and, and I don't know how long that's gonna take.
To support it.
What?
Well, it's have to build five nuclear plants in California to support it, but.
No, we're not gonna, we're gonna do better than that, Jerry. Yeah, but that's something that I'm, you know, I'm, I've been, it's been a concern of mine for quite a while.
Sure.
That we're building, building, and I don't have any problem against warehouses, but I do have a problem with the pollution that's been created.
Yeah.
Now this, and I'm going back, no, not just to you guys, but before that, and I think we need to do something from our standpoint, from the city's standpoint, to make correction, or at least make a better direction for that to happen quicker, because I don't wanna wait till, well, I, I'm not, I don't know how long I'll live, but I don't wanna wait for my kids and my grandkids to go through all of this stuff, simply because we say, well, we got jobs, yeah, I understand, I get that, I like, when I was working, I, I, I liked working, but I also felt that we were going through a lot of change, and because the legislation is written so that you can buy or trade credits on some of this pollution stuff, that I think is a, it's an easy out, but it doesn't take into the, into account the community that suffers the most, and those are the, uh, oh, I was gonna say ancient, old people, and the young people with, um, respiratory ailments.
So the rule that was mentioned before, um, the air district's rule twenty-three oh five, that's the indirect, uh, source rule, um, it does allow for, uh, operators of warehouses to, um, pay, uh, a fee, right?
Right.
But the air district uses that money and reinvests it locally for air quality improvements, so, uh, you know, kind of addressing that, the issue that, that you've brought up, so in addition to, you know, the state has a advanced clean truck regulation that requires trucks to get even cleaner, so we've already gone through, we've, uh, the, the state's, um, truck and bus regulation, which, uh, significantly reduces the emissions that, uh, trucks can, uh, can, uh, emit, and that has, that went into full effect in January first twenty twenty-three, so we're just starting to see the effects of that, so you can't register your, your vehicle unless you meet certain standards, right? So, and there, these standards are orders of magnitude below what was previously allowed, so there's new, there's improvement there, then also on the, uh, you know, with the air district's regulation, uh, you know, there, there's improvements there, so, and then you have of course the, uh, state's advanced clean truck regulation that requires the, the electric vehicles to be phased in as well, so I mean, there, there is, uh, and that's only the tip of the iceberg in terms of the regulations that are required, so, there's a, um, a very focused and concerted effort at, uh, you know, addressing this issue from a lot of different perspectives, and, uh, with the air district's, um, focus on also, uh, making improvements locally, so, um, you know, there's, there's a lot happening to make big changes.
And we can expect a lot more to happen.
Yeah.
In, in trying to better.
Oh yeah, there's more.
Or environment.
So as you can hear, I mean, there's a lot being done on air quality, obviously you're concerned about, you're right, frankly, we all live here, we grew, we have families here in the LA Basins, I, I lived myself, uh, in downtown LA for five years, and, uh, remember the, the brownout days that thankfully we haven't had in a while, um, but anyway, I, there's a lot of work being done at the state level, uh, at the Air Quality Management District level, which is a regional level, and I wanna point out the cities are also doing quite a bit, uh, there's a fair amount of solar required on, on these buildings, there's a significant number of restrictions as to, uh, normally the routes that trucks can take, their idling, um, refrigeration, if there's such a thing, I mean, there's this large series of regulations that the city is also implementing, and insisting our projects to follow and our project operator, so, I just wanna let you know, it's, you know, it's addressed at all levels, because you're, you're definitely not the only one with your concerns.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
We have two additional speakers.
Okay, we'll take the first one.
Kathleen Valencia.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to be here, um, I live at seventeen twenty-eight West Coast Boulevard, I was here at the last meeting, um, we spoke to several of our neighbors, and they weren't able to come, and they just asked if I could speak on their behalf in a sense, um, it's back to school night at a lot of the schools, so, a lot of the parents are there.
Yeah.
Um, our concern is the traffic, and we spoke about it last time, that there could be a sign put up, no trucks, and so forth, and the signs are great, but there's nobody to police them, ours is a residential area, and we have many trucks that still come through our street, um.
What street is that on? What street are you seeing?
West Coast Boulevard, you've got the county, the dirt road, and then you have the paved road, and our street.
That's a truck route though, I think, right? Is that where?
Ours is not, but, um, Locust is.
Locust is, okay, but yours is not, you said there's trucks going through there?
We still have trucks that go through there, what happens is that they go through, um, either GPS or Google or whatever it is.
Going to Target?
Yes, and they. And it's dangerous because we have children, not that they play in the street, but there could be an accident, and, you know, it's a safety, um, from Riverside all the way to Casmalia, no stops, we talked about, um, Casa Grande, uh, I think that we, they just mentioned something about putting a signal there?
Yes.
Well, the signal will help the traffic from Target, but we still have students who walk from the, um, by Sierra Lakes, in that area, or Sierra, I'm sorry, that walk through this area, and it's Cordiak, um, Fitzgerald, Cussera, and they walk to Harder, so we have that little through street, there aren't that many sidewalks, and it's dangerous, not just for our students, but for the community members that walk through there. And it's dangerous, not just for our students, but for the community members that walk through there. We have the park, Ferguson Park, so a lot of kids go to Ferguson Park, or they walk over to Birdsall Park. Um, the school district is building a park, and I don't know the name of it yet, which is right across the street from Cussera. So that will bring more community members there. On the corner of Candlewood and Maple, um, that's a bus stop for our kindergarteners. There is no crosswalk there. There's nothing that states that schoolchildren are there. So that's an issue, not on you all, school, whichever. Um, the traffic that's built up from Carter, after they get out of school, that's from Maple on Bonnart and Persimmon.
It's time.
So ma'am, real, real quick, I'm gonna give you a little bit of advice.
Okay.
Uh, too, so I share a lot of the concerns you have there. This, this project will end up bringing, widening that road, adding, I think, a little bit of sidewalks in that area to, I, I see what you're talking about, 'cause I live in that area. Um, as far as the sidewalks in other locations, um, we're not the body that, that does any of that. I would highly recommend you make an appointment to talk to the mayor and, and, or talk to, uh, the team here, Colby, because they, the, the city will put, uh, project development, they'll get, they have a list of priority. And when you're talking children and that sort of thing, they can help it get higher in the priority. But, uh, you, that old saying is true, the squeaky wheel does get the oil. So I would definitely be doing that, because, um, it'll bring more attention to it, and hopefully we can get that handled sooner. Even to the school too, 'cause the school has money, uh, that it could leverage with the city on some of these areas, especially if it's a school, uh, bus stop for children. But that's a whole other body outside of this body. We're, we're appointed to look at plans to see if they meet the requirements, uh, uh, help leverage the community's concerns related to this project. We did this last meeting, that's how we're pushing more money toward the signal. We're getting the city to work closer to get it going, and adding more glass to make it look less a big concrete box. That's, that's kind of our, the extent of our authority, uh, to try to do, and, um, the other stuff though, I, I encourage you, please keep bringing that up and, and make appointments for these people, okay?
Okay, thank you. Can I say one last thing?
Uh, you're out of time, but we'd be more happy to talk to you after.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. We'll take the next person.
The next speaker is Yessenia Ramos.
Hello.
Hi.
This is my first time being here, okay? I just want to say one thing. I don't care what you guys do, you guys do whatever you guys, okay? But I've been there for like thirty-something since that house been built. My father's eighty-one dollars, eighty-one, eighty-two years old, okay? You guys come and destroy whatever you guys want. The only thing I'm asking, if you guys are gonna build that building, put a barrier. I don't want no more traffic through there. 'Cause I'm tired of it. 'Cause we wake up in the morning, truck beep 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 can come, come through there, okay? And you'll say, oh, this and that, I don't care. We have to deal with that, okay? Children, everybody. But you guys don't live there. We do. Let me tell you that. All you guys think, I'm gonna build this. Why are you building stuff? There's no buildings that just don't work. I mean, I see so many buildings, empty, empty, empty. Why are you just building? Build something that is successful, make a market. We need a market, we need a Walmart, we need something there, okay? I don't mind, but you're just, just building buildings that, I don't understand, you're just building stuff, okay? My thing is, if you can do it, just block it off. We just want that whole sidewalk blocked for us. We don't want nothing you guys could do, whatever you guys want over there, okay, on that dirt road. We want our side of West Coast. You know, my, you know, my house is seventeen twenty-nine West Coast, and I gotta hear it every time. I can come from work, and if not, uh, this building has to, all this building is gonna be there, building, no. Build something that is, you know, successful. But no, you guys are just building, and I just see it empty, empty, empty. I go to all these other places, and it's empty. The only thing I'm asking, if you're gonna build it, fine, block us off. And then you guys didn't even, you guys payment everything, everybody's, um, street, but you guys didn't pay us. Our, our street, West Coast, is all bumps and holes and everything.
Yeah.
That's dangerous. I get, okay, I go in front of my house, I have a big old hole like this. I back up, I'm gonna get a, you know, flat tire. But you guys don't care. No, you guys only want the building. That's all I'm saying. Block me off, block the whole bill, and block the thing, okay? I don't mind, do whatever you guys, 'cause everything we say is gonna go one yard to one other, okay? I'm just saying, do whatever, but just block us off, because you guys do not listen. You guys do whatever you guys want. You guys don't listen to us, because why? Because all these people right here, they got the money. We are not the money-rich people, okay? I just gotta say one thing. My house, we've been there for the longest, and we never had that, okay? And you know, of course, we always have to, you know, go with, whatever Rialto says, Rialto says, but here we go. I mean, the only thing I'm asking, listen, please, block us off. You're gonna do it anyways. Just listen to us, make a favor for us. We don't want nothing to do it. 'Cause, you know, it's still gonna do it.
It's time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, just to clarify to the group, no one here is employed by the city. We all volunteer. We're not elected. We're here, uh, a body that looks at regulations. I think we've done, um, a lot of concessions on this project here. Um, I have comments after this item, um, that I'd like to request that the city drive a meeting with Target again. I'd like them here, uh, during the meeting, and we need to talk about the truck traffic, 'cause that truck traffic is coming for Target. I have the same complaints, and we need to figure out what the hell they're gonna do. With all the technology, they can't figure out how to tell their truckers which route to take, it's, it's maddening. So let's do that, but, um, uh, do you have any more requests to speak?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, grab a motion.
Move to adopt the attached resolution, Exhibit B, C, D, and E, thereby approving the addendum prepared for the project, and thereby approving tentative parcel map number two zero two three dash zero 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 one, condition of development permit number two zero two three dash zero zero one one, and precise plan of design number two zero two three dash zero zero one eight, subject to defined conditions therein.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I oppose.
You oppose, anyone else oppose? No, okay, so.
I have to abstain.
You abstain? Okay, so is it Carrie? Yeah, let me see.
Carrie's.
Yeah, Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next, I, Danny, you know the street they're talking about, where the trucks are going through? They're talk, okay. All right. Next is comments, right?
No comments.
No comments, okay. So ju- just to reiterate my comments, can we find out who's managing that store, uh, that warehouse? And if we can get someone from corporate? We used to have, there's an Asian guy, I can't remember his name, but he was a very nice, responsive person. I think I still have his number, but I don't know if he's even still there. But we would really like to have a meeting with them here, open, you know, to discuss complaints in the community on truck traffic. And, and I would give them a heads up, they need to come with solutions. 'Cause we've been talking about this for fifteen years. It's silly at this point, please. My frustration is with them, obviously you know this, but, you know, the, the young lady, very passionate. I get what she's saying. And that's a damn dirt road, it's ridiculous. So we gotta figure this out. They have, there has to be a way that, um, whoever companies are contracting with is a third party to bring those trucks there, they need to be given some information, other than the goal, uh, Google GPS, 'cause they're, it's taken them, it's been taking them there for years. And maybe a lot of that will go away when that street opens up all the way, but they gotta have a plan now to mitigate this thing, 'cause the signs not work. You know, that's, any of the comments on that, guys? You guys have been hearing me fish, complaining about this for a long time. Yeah.
Jerry, I would like to say something. I agree with what you're saying. I think we need to take a closer look at what's going on. I don't know whether a lot of the, um, the legislation that we just talked about, twenty-three oh five, if that applies to retroactively, or has it been applied before? This was approved back in, what, twenty-one? Twenty-one, and I, it's taken a lot of time to just, uh, work the legislation through, because we have different, uh.
I think it would be held to the standards of when the permit was pulled, right? Is that how that works?
The what?
You're talking about the standards of the.
Yeah, and, and, well, I'd like to know, because it says the, um, the standard at this time is zero point zero zero two five. What, what's the range that we're looking at? I think as a, as a rule, we all look at the range, this sounds good. Zero zero two five sounds great. Compared to what? You know, if it's zero point zero zero zero, to me, that would be ideal. But we take whatever the, whoever does is, uh, whatever they tell us that this, this works, is this is better. I think we need to work in that direction, improving the, the way we handle these kinds of, uh, issues. Uh, because we let these things go, and, and we just continue, I say, well, we can't go back. Well, I don't, like I said earlier, I don't have any problem with warehouses. But I do have a problem with the community and how it's affected.
Yeah.
And how it's impacted. Um, especially the younger people, because they're gonna be here longer, long after I'm gone. And some of the problems that we had, that the lady, the last lady that just talked, uh, those are very, very true problems, but we just talk about them. Is there a way that we can do something about sending something to the, uh, City Hall, to the mayor and council?
Frank, you need to run for city council.
What?
You need to run for city council, see.
I don't need to run for anything, Jerry. I, I'm too old for that. And I, and I don't want to be a beholding to anybody.
Yeah.
But I think as a, as a group, we need to send something to the city council. I don't know, maybe I'm talking out of my field or out of my ear or something, but I think if the rest of you, Commissioners, agree with this, fine. If you don't, then please say so, and I'll shut up, at least while I'm, while I'm outside, but not in here.
Yeah, no, 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 it, it's, the, the key thing is, like I've, I've said repeatedly, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, I'm sure a lot of us up here do, but this body has a job to do, and it's limited in its scope. That's the only thing.
But we can make recommendations.
We, that's right. We can make recommendations.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
And we make a recommendation.
Yeah. Uh, I'm just curious if these, if the air, I want to talk with him offline, the air quality, if it's, 'cause we learned that traffic studies are a sham. I want to know what the standards are for that. It's like a random Tuesday at two in the morning, you do your sample. We learned the traffic, they can manipulate that pretty good, so I'm just curious how, what, how the standards are, but not for this thing here. Um, but, uh, okay, that's all I had. Anything else from the guys? Grab a motion. All right, thank you. It's adjourned. Thank you, guys.